Good evening and welcome to the February 22nd Board Meeting of the Beaverton School Board. We appreciate you being with us this evening, especially a little bit earlier than we're normally joining you, but thank you for being with us this evening. We'll start off this evening with the roll call. So if I call your name, please answer by saying here. Anne Brian?
Here.
Susan Greenberg. I know Susan might said she might be running just a little bit late. We'll come back to her. Leanne Larson?
Here.
Eric Simpson?
Here.
Donna Tiner?
Here.
Vice Chair Tom Collette?
Here.
And Chair Becky Timchuck present. All right. And with that, we're going to start off our evening with how we start off every evening with our guests. And our first guest this evening is President of the BEA Sarah Schmidt. Sarah, welcome this evening.
Hello, I made it on time and early, earlier than normal. Good evening Superintendent Grodding, Chair Tim Check and members of the board. From I've got a quick BEA update here for everybody. We're working with great urgency on agreements for implementing in-person instruction. And as an association, we've been focused on safety protections, workload protections, and really creating the most ideal learning experiences for our students through the end of this year. We have our Ready School Safe Learners Guidance from the state. We have updated guidance from the CDC recently. And now our task is to work with district leaders on how all of these things will be implemented in our schools. So we've got a long meeting tomorrow. We've been working pretty tirelessly on that. And I know our community is both educators, families, everyone's, you know, keeping their eyes on that. So we are working very hard. In other, in other news, speaking of hard work, I just want to always acknowledge the hard work that educators have been doing this year, putting together powerful learning experiences for students, given pretty incredible challenges and doing our work in a new way. I want to acknowledge some of the things that folks have been hearing, some rhetoric about a lost, lost year, or that we need to address learning loss that's happened during the pandemic. And while the pandemic has brought so much pain and suffering, I noted, we just passed 500,000 deaths in our country, and it is significant. We also don't want to write this year off. And it's not accurate to say that this has been a lost year for our students. And I want to focus, kind of like change our narrative a little bit, thinking about learning loss as deficit based thinking. And I want to invite us, just as a thought experiment, to turn our attention on the learning that has been found this year. And I want to share a few examples from our members about things that they're seeing with students that are really worthy of celebration, while acknowledging at the same time, this is not an ideal situation that we're in. So we've heard from teachers that students are learning technology and helping their families to navigate. And kids are little sponges, so they're picking those things up really quickly. Families have had a lot more avenues for communicating with teachers. And so there's an increased amount of communication that's happening. And we have a lot more tools. And I think that those are going to stay in our tool bags moving forward. So we can have more frequent communication with families and caregivers. I've heard from reading intervention teachers who work with some of our youngest learners to make sure that their reading skills are progressing. And they're reporting that they're having more ability to spend one-on-one and small group time with students and giving more personalized and responsive and targeted instruction. And they're seeing significant growth in a lot of their students. We're also hearing from our members that they're able to do more innovative and collaborative professional development to support each other. They are recording sample lessons and sending them to colleagues or sending quick tutorials to one another to help increase their skills and their practice. I've heard some amazing stories of teachers who have students in their class that have shared about their families and their cultures and their family traditions. And they're able to bring, you know, grandma alongside them, or to share an item that they have in their home that is really special to their culture and their family. And lessons and activities from class are becoming conversation starters for families because we're teaching inside our students' homes. And I'm also hearing that students are really accessing office hours and reporting that they really appreciate being able to work at their own pace when doing asynchronous learning, and if that's made a difference for a lot of our students. So again, this is not to say that CDL has been a complete success on all fronts. It has been significant, a significant challenge. But as educators, we're also learners. And we've been learning a lot about our profession throughout this pandemic and how we can be using new ways of teaching our kids. So as we're looking ahead at returning to in-person instruction, and even as some of our students stay in CDL, it's really important for us to take stock in what's working, and all of the ways that we've changed the way that we serve students, and what learning can be incorporated from this year into what we're building for the future and what I've started calling better than normal. We don't want to go back to normal. We want it to be better than normal. And so I hope that we're taking all of the learning found into account as we're looking to the future so that we can be better than before. So just to wrap up to all the educators that have been finding this learning and have been working long, long hours this year. Thank you always. You're seen, you're appreciated, your work is valued. To our families and community, we will do our best as always to give every student the best learning environment in whatever learning model they are in. And also, please, everyone, wear a mask, wash your hands, keep your gathering small, help us keep this downward trend of COVID cases so that we can all be back in our school buildings. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you, Sarah, so much for joining us. And we appreciate all of our hardworking staff and teachers. And we appreciate you being here with us tonight. So thank you. Susan, we're glad to have you with us. I know this earlier start time, we're all balancing all the different things in our life. So we appreciate it. But I did want to wait until you were here. Board members, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Great. We'll just move right along. So thank you very much. All right. Our next guest with us this evening are representative from the Student Advisory Committee. And we have President Neil, there you go. And then Riley. So we'll let you take it, take it away. We love having you guys here with us.
Thank you. Yeah. So at the BSAC, the main issue I've been working on, like I've mentioned in the last few meetings, is student mental health. And right now, in our mental health, in our group, we're trying to develop a survey to give the students to gather their input on like their, how their mental health is doing, you know, what they'd like to see improved in schools and, and the way like mental health is treated. And we plan to gather this, this data and information to eventually develop a mental health seminar with like different mental health professionals, hotline reps, and like BSAC reps. And this would be helpful for staff to regarding how to treat like student mental health and how to help students, students' mental health in the best way. So that's what we're currently working on for mental health. And I'll go ahead and pass it on to Riley now. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So my job on BSAC is also to run our Humans of VSD Instagram, which I've been talking about the last few months. And it's been super successful, really positive feedback. We've almost finished with every high school. And then we will start again at the beginning so we can get as many spotlights as possible. And then our other group is also working on around SROs. And right now, they're conducting one-on-one interviews with different high school SROs, and then also putting out Google forums to get student engagement and input on how they feel about SROs. And their goal within maybe this year or even going into next year is to create some sort of like conduct book for both students and SROs to make sure that everyone feels comfortable with having them in our high schools. So yeah, thank you guys for inviting us back this month.
Well, we appreciate you guys taking time from your homework and your, all your other activities to be with us tonight. And we're very excited to have a meeting with the Student Advisory Committee. The board is to meet with you on March 8. And we'll get to spend some one-on-one time with you and speak to you, you know, so we're really looking for it because it's one of our favorite things. So thank you so much for the time that you give to, to the school district and being the voice of our, our students. So we appreciate that. So we'll let you guys get back to your homework. So, but thank you for being with us tonight. Appreciate it. All right. Next is our public participation. And since we have been meeting virtually, we've been taking that public participation, we open up so people can submit written public testimony. It was open on Thursday, and then it stayed open until today at noon. We had 65 comments that were all given to you as board members that you have to read in their entirety. They will be entered into part of the public record. I did my best this afternoon to try to summarize. And let's just say, we have a lot of passionate folks that are advocating for many different things. We had, we heard from lots of parents, everything from keeping our current comprehensive distance learning, to having quite a few people that are ready for our schools to reopen and open tomorrow, or open next week, or open in the next month. But lots of different things about that. We had folks that would like to get more regular updates. And so we're approaching that of how we can get more regular updates. Because as many of you know, as many of the board members, as many of our community know, information is almost changing on a daily basis. And so almost as fast as we get information out, it is, it is changed. And then we also need to, when we are doing all of our communication, all of our communication needs to be interpreted so that all of our families can hear that information. And that does have a little bit of turnaround time. Lots of people want to know what the next year is going to look like, and when we're going to be making decisions on, on next year. And we also had teachers that also were given concern about how hybrid is going to work and, and the workload. Some folks that were questioning some of the things that we're doing in social studies. And we'll have staff look at that. Also, a staff member asking when we're going to be continuing in our SRO discussion. Also, something that is on our agenda tonight, we had six families that would like us to name our new middle school, Timberland. We also had two or three families that would like us to honor the Native American heritage. So like with everything in, in our school list, we have differences of opinion. And also, some folks that had some questions about the boundary change and what those changes are going to need to Cedar Park, and some folks on what we do with background check. And some folks also having some questions about our social media. So that's just a quick summary, but all of us will have those to read in our, the entirety, and it will be part of our public record. But we really appreciate our community taking the time to share their thoughts with us. It is very important that we hear from our community, and we appreciate that. So with that, we are going to be starting our reports for the evening. And our first report is from Superintendent Grodding. Take it away Superintendent.
Yep. Thank you, Chair Tim Check, School Board, and welcome, community and staff. First thing I'll talk about is a little bit of an update on our return to school planning. And as I've said before, we continue to pivot regarding COVID-19 and requiring us to shift many times, and also to acknowledge that we know that these shifts often cause anxiety, frustration to our students and families and staff. So currently, our district is planning to come back in a hybrid model, beginning with grades free K through two on April 5. And then we will expand to grades three through five the next week. Grades six through 12 are planned for a hybrid model at the beginning of our fourth quarter, which takes place on April 19. And I want to say, we're working with both bargaining units. And I think we're making great progress. And just want to special shout out to BEA leadership and OSEA leadership for working with the district. And want also to know out there that we are going to maintain a distance learning option for families that want to continue in distance learning. We know that we have many families out there in different circumstances, and also have apprehension about coming back. So through the end of this year, we're going to maintain that distance learning option for those families. We will be bringing together educators to talk about those hybrid models at the elementary, middle, and high school level. We've also heard from our families that if at all possible, it's extremely important to maintain that teacher-child relationship. If we can't at all do that. So we're going to leverage administrators, teachers, educators, other educators and support staff to see how we might go about doing that. I'm very optimistic that we are going to meet our deadlines of both April 5 and April 19. And very optimistic about that. The other thing that we're doing is we are really trying to look at our ability as well as other stakeholders in our community to see how we might be able to expand childcare options. We know that this is a, a significant, has a significant impact on our community and on our staff as we get ready to come back. So we're working with many outside stakeholders, working with our internal team to see how we might be able to expand opportunities for that, for that to take place. Also, optimistically, our caseloads, positive COVID-19 caseloads in Washington County continue to decline. We're keeping our fingers crossed that that will, that trend will continue. And I know that parents are asking, what will the fall look like? And we are in constant contact with the Oregon Health Authority, with our governor, with the Department of Education, to look at all the options. We want to make sure when we come back, we're coming back safely. But there's great optimism after staff being able to receive vaccinations, using the right protocols, that we can look a lot more like normal in the fall. That's all considering that COVID-19 doesn't take another turn. Some of the variants don't expand. But at this time, we're, we're very optimistic. Next, I want to talk a little bit about activities and athletics. And we continue to follow those OHA guidelines and work with OSA to provide our students the ability to practice, condition, and now compete in contests when we can successfully adhere to the current rules and regulations set forth by OHA and OSA. With our current metrics, we're planning for practices, conditionings, and contests in all sports. Another thing I want to let you know that as a district, we've made the decision this year to waive all athletic fees for the remainder of the year. We know that many of our families are in significant economic distress right now. And so we are going to waive those fees. It'll take a hit on our bottom line, but we think it's the right thing to do right now. So for parents and students out there, regardless of the number of activities that you would like to participate in, there will be no fee. On the budget side, you know, we, we're, we're continuing to look at our ending fund balance. We're starting to use some of that ending fund balance to plan for summer school, to plan for interventions that we know that our students need. So we'll end up, we'll eat up some of that ending fund balance. We also know that there's some CARES money that we have received. Right now, it's about $20 million that we've received. And that's for all the way from to adhere to health and safety standards, to look at some possible interventions for students. And then also, on the horizon, there's a possibility that we could be receiving additional dollars if federal legislation passes. And that could be some additional dollars in which we could use to plan for the upcoming school year. Our light, our administrators, our COSA, OSBA, and other folks were advocating to the legislature that to go beyond the governor's $9.1 billion budget, to go up to $9.58 billion allocation for the K-12 system. We are currently looking at full funding for Measure 98 and partial funding for the Student Investment Act. But that's partial investment, we're hoping is going to be somewhere up around 80%, which is a lot better than we had last year. Also, want to report, we work with a multicultural organization called REEP, and want the board and community to know that we will be expanding our services with REEP from, currently from Aloha and Beaverton High Schools, to both the Mountain View and Meadow Park Middle Schools this coming fall. In addition, the rest of our middle schools are very interested in taking advantage of this opportunity. Right now, we're working with Mark Jackson, who is the CEO of REEP. And we want to make sure that he has the capacity and we're ready to expand. Once again, you know, REEP is a multicultural nonprofit organization with their primary mission to ignite, elevate, and engage students of color to become our next leaders. And so we're, we're really excited. We were able to meet with Mark this morning. And we're really excited about, about that and reaching out. And then finally, I just want to point out that we have some amazing staff, as Sarah said, doing some amazing work. We cannot come back next fall, the way that we left about a year ago. We've learned so many things. There's so many significant changes that we can make that will be a benefit for our students and staff. And then I just want to highlight, you saw, you saw one of the gentlemen today. Neil was on here with the B-SAC. And right now, he's come up with a nonprofit to where he's actually helping the delivery of groceries to our seniors in our community. And I don't know if you saw it, Beaverton High School has some folks there that they're actually arranging vaccinations for our seniors. And I have a hard enough time with technology. And I know some of our seniors have a tough time in trying to navigate that system. So we have the seniors taking it upon themselves to really go out and help our senior community in getting those vaccinations. And just, just great things happening. So our students are doing a great job. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Great. Yeah, it is amazing. Some of the things that our students are doing through this pandemic, it just amazed me how innovative and out of the box and take initiative. Board members, do you have any questions for the superintendent tonight after his report? All right. Thank you so much, Superintendent, for that great report. And it's great to hear that we are moving forward with school. And with every vaccination, we get one step closer. So thank you so much for that great news. Next up is a financial update. Mr. Schofield, are you ready?
Thank you, Chair, Chair Tim Check, Members of the Board, Superintendent Grodding. Appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about our financial forecast as of the end of January. If you take a look at the one cheater on, on the forecast for the general fund, you'll see that we've revised revenue down about four and a half million dollars, expenditures up $1.1 million, and therefore, lowering in the reserve amount to, to about $71 million at this point. We will be keeping a close eye on our expenditure projections and, and revenue projections as we move forward. The, the revenue decline was specifically around our high cost disability fund, and some concerns that we won't have near the numbers that we've had in prior years in terms of those high costs. I don't, I think that will be the case in a number of districts as well. We just don't know quite how that will play out financially for all districts. So we'll keep an eye on the finances. As Superintendent Grodding mentioned, we're on our way, we're working on budget. We have budget 101 coming up here in a couple of weeks. We're looking forward to that and sharing some information. And that's all I have. Chair Tim Check.
Thank you. And board members, do you have any questions about the finances?
One question.
Sure.
Yeah, I noticed in the grant report, you had like about 20.6 million of the CARES Act money. Will that be in the next report, like a month from now? Or when will that be integrated into the overall budget?
It should be brought in soon, Eric. We haven't signed our final paperwork that gave us the authorization. And we've seen our preliminary allocated amount, we just haven't signed off on the paperwork. So yes, it will be coming in.
Sounds good.
So are we going to be dealing with like several different budgets depending on, on when we start getting student numbers, or when we start getting the metting from the federal government? I mean, I just know that you're, you're trying to nail Jello to a wall here. But is, are you going to be dealing with like several working budgets or?
I think so. Chair Tim Check, we'll be working with a lot of numbers, right? And as you folks are probably aware, we'll also have the state revenue forecast on Wednesday. That'll tell us some more information. We'll expect to see the co-chairs budget framework, you know, a couple of weeks after that. So that's going to be instructive on the general fund. Outside of the general fund between SIA, High School Success, you know, the additional ESSER funds we've gotten so far, the potential for more ESSER funding as we go down the line. All, we're keeping an eye on all that. And, and yeah, it's, it's going to be a busy spring.
And is there something the board can be doing right now to, to assist you with this? I know we have a committee helping, but I mean, is there something we can be doing with the legislature or something else that you would like the board to be helping you out with?
Certainly, I, I think the significant priority we have is, while the SIA and other funds are great and, and wonderful for our kids, having an increase of 1.1% in the state school fund is not going to get us where we need to go as a district. Our costs go up more than, and again, that 1.1% increases over the biennium. So any advocacy work we can do around getting that 9.1 billion up closer to the 9.6 billion is Superintendent Grodding mentioned earlier, will be key. Because we, if we're funded at the 9.1, we are, general operating budget will simply continue to erode over time. And that, that's just not good.
Thank you so much. All right. Next report is our return to school. And Deputy Superintendent Hansman, we'll start with you. And I'm sure you'll.
Okay.
With your staff.
Well, good evening, Board Chair Tim Check, Superintendent Grodding, and the School Board. Really happy to be here this evening. We have a lot of information to share with you. But I want to start out as, as usual, reiterating what Superintendent Grodding and Sarah Schmidt has alluded to, and that is thanking our educators, from our staff, to our teachers, to our students, and our parents for helping us with our comprehensive distance learning. And we know everybody has had such a big lift this year, and can't thank them enough. We have with us tonight, as usual, we have Brian Sika and Josh Gomez to kind of go over the return to school update. We have plans on, updates on advisory metrics, timelines. We started Lippy today, which was an exciting time. We will be going into hybrid for elementary and the secondary plan that went out to the community today. And we'll end with Josh talking about the HVAC update as well. So Brian, you can go ahead and take it on.
Great. Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, Board Chair Tim Check, Board Member Superintendent Grodding, and everyone, everyone listening. Appreciate the time to share some updates with you and answer any questions that you have. I'm just going to jump right in, again, remembering our advisory metrics. Won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but just remember that the, obviously, the lower, the better. Our numbers are based on 14 days cumulative. So we add up the number of new cases for 14 days in a row, and compare that to the number of residents in both Multnomah and Washington County. That's just a little bit different than the way the CDC chose to put their metrics out. If you looked in their guidance, they're doing it by a seven day window. So if you're looking and comparing those two, just remember one's based on seven days, the CDC, and OHA, and ODE chose to, to maintain the 14 day, day window. But again, those metrics give us direction on what levels of student, by that I mean, what grade level of student that we should be prioritizing and bringing back. And then just the last thing I'll note on this slide is that there is no level of metric right now that does not require us to still meet all of the health and safety metrics and Ready School Safe Learners, in particular, the 35 square feet. So right now, there's no, no number we're looking for, which would allow us to not enter into a hybrid. So that's some of what we're looking for. When Dawn talks about planning for next year, that's going to be something we'll have to pay attention to. Does, is that, does the Ready School Safe Learners guidance change as the metrics continue to decrease? So we'll be keeping an eye on that for, for next year. Here's the graph I hope you're well familiar with by now. Keep heading in the right direction. The Washington County and Multnomah County are pretty close together. So they're getting kind of pushed on the slide, but both well under the 200 mark, Multnomah County just above at about 100 cases. both well under the two hundred mark. Multnomah County just above at about a hundred cases, hundred and eight cases per hundred thousand residents. And Washington County dipped below the hundred at the, the ninety three, almost ninety four cases per hundred thousand. Looking back, that puts us uh, about even with where we were um, when this graph starts about, about the middle of October. And so our, what's not shown on this is another one we need to keep track of, and that's the test positivity rate. And for both counties, that is below five, which is certainly the threshold that we're looking for. So I can't think of any other way to say, but this is good news. Just remember, we were worried in October that it was going to go up when we were here and it did. So um, like Sarah said, just we need to keep encouraging our community to pay attention to those um, mask wearing, hand washing and all that and keep them going down. So we can get our kids back, back in, in school as much as they can. Little bit about the timeline, uh, the week of February twenty second is upon us. Today was our first shot at our phase two of limited in-person instruction with our internet cafes where we had students um, across all grade levels accessing our campus. Today was mostly about the technology, about getting access to the network. Um, the next kind of big week will be the week following spring break. And the week following spring break is when we plan on doing our staff development for our elementary teachers on what they need to know to be ready to meet all of their new protocols and procedures in their schools. What that would look like, what we have in our agreement is three days for that. So that would be the three days following spring break. Again, this is all proposed, but it, it's looking pretty good for now. April first and second, our students would remain in CDL. And then April the fifth, of course, our pre K two students come back. And um, anyone that would happen, if there are teacher changes, anyone that would have a teacher change, regardless of the grade level would start it on that fifth, even though grades three to five would not be back in the hybrid yet. So if you just look at the bottom of this slide, our elementary hybrid begins um, on April fifth. We're going to bring grades three to five back on April twelfth and we're aiming at April nineteenth for um, for the return for secondary. And a reminder, that coincides with the fourth quarter, which at the secondary level, the quarter by quarter is, is a bit more significant of a, of a time, the way those classes are organized, especially at the high school being that we're now on a four by four at our comprehensives. Little bit of a note there, still working out the exact um, dates of when the secondary staff development would, would take place. That's, that's still under consideration with our teams. Just a little bit of numbers um, for who was um, given the opportunity and agreed that they would take us up on that opportunity today for um, limited in-person instruction. Uh, you know, some quick math there somewhere uh, in the neighborhood of around seven hundred students. Welcome back to the internet cafe. Obviously, so that's nowhere near as many as we want to eventually get back, but it's a, it is an incremental step, step back in that right direction. As we expand limited in person, um, like I said, we're at internet cafes right now focusing on the network um, and access to the network, but we're also um, going to be delivering services to our special education and multilingual departments as we build towards those um, return to hybrid dates. So let's talk about those dates. Um, our elementary hybrid, we're so excited to welcome our students back, um, back onto campus on April the fifth. And so students will be able to be on campus four days a week. Wednesday for the student experience will remain very similar to what, what it is now. The in-person groups, it looks like they'll have to be either an AM group or a PM group, but I'm going to show you some numbers in a minute. We'll, we'll see, but students will be on campus half of, half of a day. And that's really needed because we, we have to maintain that thirty five square feet. And it, it's, it's just sort of a coincidence that that ends up giving our, our classroom capacities about half of what the class is. Students will um, have online for the, the remainder of their school day. So we still want our students thinking about a full school day, even though they'll only be on campus for um, for half of their school day. The, the online portion of that will either remain asynchronous in nature or with a PE music or arts teacher possibly providing some, some live opportunities. And then again, families have the option to remain fully remote for the remainder of the current school year. You had a report similar to this or a, a graph similar to this in your report. Just wanted to give you some very updated numbers. This is kind of the end of it. This has sixteen thousand, almost seventeen, a little over sixteen thousand students accounted for. And if you just look at the very, very end, the very right where it says total, fifty one percent, just a little over fifty one percent of our families chose to um, remain in comprehensive distance learning. Again, just about fifty percent of our families um, are choosing to return in a hybrid. So little bit less than we thought. We thought we'd be a little bit more in the one third to two third, but this gives us numbers now. Now we know for sure. And so we can um, really now go school by school, classroom by classroom and figure out what the impacts of these, these decisions are. Uh, an update for you, I had mentioned this in my report, um, our secondary plan, we had called it BSD Connect and that was to expand limited in-person instruction. Um, we're going to discontinue that term. The, the reasoning for discontinuing that term is with the um, metrics trending in the direction they are, with the opportunities for vaccines and the ideas that are put forth, we now believe we can enter into a hybrid model safely at the secondary level. And so there's not a need for this intermediary kind of advanced Lippi or extended Lippi. We'll still be doing limited in-person instruction at the secondary level. But again, we're targeting April nineteenth to return our students into that hybrid model. The model at secondary works a little bit differently. Um, happy to talk details if it's appropriate, but in, in effect, if you will, students will attend class in person two full days a week, but it'll be for the full time, not like the elementary where it was um, four days a week for half the time. This is two full days, two days a week, but for the full time. And students will remain with all of their classmates and within their teacher, they'll do so in a concurrent fashion. So um, if we were all in the same class, some of us may be participating in person. Some of us may be participating at the same time online at our, at our secondary level. And that, that goes a little bit to the specialty nature of the, the courses that the teachers are teaching at the high schools and, and middle school levels. Our next steps from a teaching learning perspective, um, we've already had one and we're planning um, it, two more centrally on what we're just calling them building walkthroughs and um, Josh Gomez was able to lead us through an elementary school through El Monica, and we had representatives from all departments able to just really walk through a simulation of the student day and the staff day, really talking about those specifics. What's it look like when a student gets off the bus? What's it look like as a student enters the, the door? How do we navigate restroom breaks? How do we navigate the entire day? And we'll be doing that uh, at the middle school as well as the high school to give principals the guidance that they need to make sure their buildings are ready to, to, to welcome students in. Again, like I said, we're, um, we, we're diving into that data that I was sharing a second ago about student and family choice. And that'll allow us to finalize the class rosters. Superintendent Grouding directed us to do whatever we can within our abilities to limit the amount of teacher changes and we're going to be spending our, our time, you know, in the, in the foreseeable future, um, doing our best to, to make that happen. And then finally, I think Don mentioned this as well. We do have our certified staff consultancy groups and that's just what we're calling our staff input. We're convening teams of educators throughout our system to really help us refine the details and the application, the implementation of our hybrid plans, everything from supports to resources as we get ready for those, those key April dates. So um, with that, Josh, I'm going to turn it over to you for your part, and then maybe we can just take questions together at the end.
That's good, Brian. Good evening, school board. Josh Gomez, uh, Chief Facilities Officer. So I wanted to give you an update from our February first work session about HVAC and talk about things that have been done uh, since that time. So at the work session, I talked about a memo that was drafted for our administrators and supervisors. That memo was completed and we did send it out to, to the admin and supervisors on February tenth. So that was shared with them. In that memo, it's a fifteen page document. We talk about modifications that we're making, changes that are being done to reduce the risk of COVID transmission through HVAC system. And so far we, we are getting feedback from staff. And so as we get feedback and questions, we are addressing that um, as we get them. Communications also posted that memo on social media. They did that in February eleventh and that was put on Instagram and our Facebook page. And what I'm going to walk you through now, Brian's going to help me out here is we do have that memo um, posted on the BSD website. It's under the return to school update. So once you go to our main page, you select the uh, return to school update button there. And then here you have a lot of information that uh, communications has worked very hard on. But under the FAQ section, there is a health and safety accordion. And Brian, if you can select that accordion. And a, a whole bunch of topics that are talked about in that accordion, you've got disinfection, you've got um, uh, information about wearing a face covering, um, social distancing. But if you scroll to the bottom, there is a link about HVAC. And when you click that, that's the memo that I'm referring to. So that's available on our district website. It's there. We'll kind of keep it right here. And so again, a fifteen page document, it goes through the areas that you see there. We've got our references, what we looked at, what guidance came out of that. Our references from ASHRAE, from ODE, from OHA. We also give a summary by school of what areas are not going to be used for Lippi or hybrid. What modifications will be made at, at any of our, any of our schools? And that's all provided in that document. So there are any questions about that score, we can definitely dive into that. But I just wanted to share with you that we have shared it with administrators. We put it on, on our social media and we have it on our website. So Brian, if you can go back to and then we can move on to the next slide. So I talked about MIR thirteen filters in our, our um, push to get those in, uh, installed into our systems. So I just wanted to give a reminder, MIR thirteen filters are not required for Lippi phase two, based on the guidance that we have looked at. I talked about at what point in time would we need MIR thirteen filters in our schools? And based on that guidance, we, we see it that when we have building occupancy close to fifty percent is when we would need that. But with that being said, we are moving forward, getting our MIR thirteen filters installed as soon as we get them. So we did receive a shipment for twelve elementary schools last week. And we are in the process of um, installing these filters at those twelve schools. We're going to have that done by Wednesday, March third. You're probably wondering why twelve elementary schools? So back in our um, early Lippi plans, we had twelve elementary schools identified. We only started four elementary schools today, but we were just prioritizing elementary. Looking at schools that had Lippi. Again, not, not needed for Lippi, but just uh, that was our priority. So we'll get, we'll get those installed on March third. The remaining elementary schools, we're looking to have those completely um, installed by March fifteenth. And, and then from there, we'll look at a phase shipment of more filters for our middle school and high schools. We expect to receive those mid-March and we'll have them through April and we will get those installed as soon as we can and get them ready for our hybrid learning. We completed our extended runtimes for our programming at all of our schools. So we can do that remotely. So that programming has been completed. And then we've also um, received all of our, our um, HEPA air cleaners. These are portable air cleaners that will be used in our isolation rooms. That's a precaution that we're taking. Those have been received and delivered to all of our isolation rooms. And with that board, that's, it's an HVAC update and at this point we'll take your questions.
Board members, got to have questions. That's a lot of information. So thank you, Brian and Josh. That was a lot of information. So.
Nikki, I have a question.
Yes.
Or two. Um, one is directed to Brian and um, in terms of students return to school and those who are at home, um, I know that everybody has in mind that many of these kids have. First of all, I should thank you both because I know there's a lot of work from both of your teams on this, but I'm concerned about the mental health of our students that are coming back to school and the kids that are still staying isolated at home uh, with CDL and um, what, what our approach is for that.
Thanks, Susan. Um, great question. I think, you know, the health and wellbeing of our students is, you know, definitely at the forefront. I think a couple of things to remember. One, can my standard answer overarching is we'll still have our behavioral health and wellness teams at every school. And another thing to remember is our, our school-based counselors, you know, our counselors that are onsite will still, will be working with schools and, and they're not going to change assignments or anything. So as we welcome our students back onto campus, the ones that are, you know, in person, it'll give an additional touch point for those students. They'll, you know, coming onto campus with that, with their counselors as well. And then with our students who are remaining online, again, our behavioral health and wellness teams are just working constantly to try to be able to engage with, with those kiddos. So I think that's our approach. And I think we're only, we're hoping to and expecting our, our, you know, effectiveness of those teams to go up as we are able to get, get some in-person things. And I, I noticed my colleague Danielle uh, unmuting her video. So uh, feel free to fill in all those gaps.
Yeah. And so thank you so much, Susan, for the, the question about this. Right now, our um, BHNW district team is working on re-putting out information around some things we can do around community building. One of the actual things that we're focused on, not just with our students, is our staff wellbeing. We think both are huge. We have um, staff and students who haven't been on site for a year now. So we know that we're going to have to do some commi- community building for our staff. We have staff who actually have never actually stepped foot into their building and have only seen students online. So that is one thing we're focusing on. And then the other piece is around our students. So we're working on um, making sure that we have kind of all hands on deck approach. So when we're looking at returning to school, our social workers will be on site, our counselors will be on site. The elementary level will have our student success coaches. But then they will also have some office hours to then still be able to connect with our students who choose to remain in CDL. So that's a big part. And then I know down the road, as we start thinking about SIA and ESSR funds, we're working on um, building a more robust approach and expanding our be- behavioral health and wellness work. So for instance, we have um, starting next month, we have a QCC quality curriculum cycle that's going to start around behavioral health and wellness in particular. So not only are we looking at the staff and who we have to support kids, but then also what are the best practices for staff wellness and student wellness? And then what are the materials we need pre K twenty one? We're really looking at that early learner to our oldest learners in our system. So um, I hear you. We are very concerned about this, but what I got to say is today hearing back around having students in Lippi, just the students who were there, we're excited to be there. The staff who were there, we're excited to have them. I have to give a shout out to our classified staff who are there. Who are supervising these small cohorts. So we're definitely planning for it and hoping for it. And I just, I just want to get the kids onsite and I think everyone else does because we want to figure out what we need to do.
Honest, honestly, I, I have a comment saying how excited I am to, to think about our, our, our students heading back into schools for, you know, I didn't think that the secondary kids would be coming back this year. So I'm especially happy to, to hear so many of our kids will be heading back if they feel comfortable at school. I do have a question um, about like, are you anticipating like fifty percent from like what you're seeing from the survey or is it hard telling? Are you getting elementary?
Do you mean, do you mean at the secondary, do we expect fifty percent like we did in, in elementary? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're, you, you know, I, I think I've long in this process decided not to try to make those predictions, but we have a similar survey that's going to, that's going to go out for secondary. Kind of a model of the plan, very similar format, asking them. It, it, it won't be as impactful on the model because the model sort of lends itself either way with that concurrent process I was talking about. But we'll, we'll be able to get you those exact numbers when, when that survey goes out and the numbers come in.
So I mean, with the survey, it was about a third of the, the population re- returned, the, the responded, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Is that correct?
Well, um, I don't know exactly because we did have to put a, a default as far as if no one responded, you know, we had to say you, you were going to have to be put in the CDL. You know, section. Um, I, I don't know what the final response rate was. Um, and so I, I'd have to find, I can reach out and find that out for you. But I, 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 I think we had a pretty high response rate on it. And it looks like Shelley might have that number.
I think there is a final response rate was ninety five percent. We had about five percent of our um, elementary enrollment who were then deferred to CDL. So um, the schools worked really hard to get participation.
Susan, do you have any other questions?
No, I'll pass.
So Leanne, you were up next and Anne after that.
Yeah, I have a comment and then a quick question. Um, first of all, this is amazing news. I'm sure everybody's um, really excited as Susan said, just the thought of our kids heading back to school and being safe and having our teachers engaged and, and ready for that. I know information's been changing daily and it's good to see the metrics moving in the right direction and hopefully they stay that way. So thank you for being so responsive and especially for So thank you for being so responsive and especially for working hard to get our secondary kiddos back in. Now that the decision, you know, has been announced and say that everything works and it keeps going in that direction. If a family made a decision for the elementary level based on thinking their secondary kids would be at home doing C D L, will they have with extenuating circumstances, opportunities to change that decision? Or how is that going to be handled?
Yeah. So any, like, any extenuating circumstances like that, we are asking, get directed right to the principal. And it's just really, it's like things that they deal with quite often, meaning extenuating circumstances. And so they'll just work with the family and do the best they can. Again, within whatever it does, the school-specific numbers end up being.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you to the entire staff. What, that, that's, this is great news.
Anne?
Like my colleagues, I'm thrilled that we're making so much progress on identifying how to safely get our kids back to school. And to support them in whatever learning environment is best for them and their family at this time. I had the opportunity to listen in on the listening session and question Q and A with elementary parents as they were trying to understand what was going to happen. And the one message that came out loud and clear to me was the strong connections that the parents and the students felt to their teachers and how little anybody wanted to change. So I, I really felt like two things going on there. One is, you know, I think people just, they want to understand what they're stepping into next. And also special shout out to our teachers to have built those kinds of connections that no matter what, that was what they didn't want to get rid of. So I just really wanted to honor our teaching staff and our families in that communication. I know that as they, as collectively we sort through next steps, one of the big questions is, so when will families know about their new teaching assignments? How are they going to understand what's coming next? And I, I wasn't sure if I just missed it, but I just wanted to clarify, you know, how much longer is it going to be before families understand? Like what is their new classroom going to look like at the elementary level?
It's a great question. And again, as we're, as we're looking through the data, we're going to really try to minimize those changes. That's something Don's been very clear with us on. I'm, I'll just get super pragmatic with you. We, we have to give a, a two-week notice to, to staff. That's just sort of a, you know, contractual thing that, that we'll be doing. So the, the very latest that a family would know would be before spring break is what, what the latest it would be before a staff, a family member would know what the new, any new, you know, teaching assignment would be. But our goal would be to get it as, as, you know, as absolutely as quick as we can out to them.
Anne, do you have any other questions?
Chair Tim Chuck, I'm not positive, but I think Anne might have froze on us.
Okay, we, we can come back, we can come back to her. Tom, I see you have a question.
Yeah. Thank you guys for the great work. It's, it's good to see the progress that's been made. I have a question. I mean, this is a question I've been getting from some community members about how we arrived at the chunk of time that we did in the frequency of time for instruction for our elementary school students. And I'm wondering, Brian, if you can kind of walk us from where we start with, you know, the R S S L metrics and the amount of space required. And then the decisions that were made from there to be able to arrive at that amount of time. And then maybe a little bit about student engagement as well.
Yeah, you bet, Tom. That's a great question. So I think to start, it's every, every human in a room needs thirty-five square feet. It, again, it just so happens if you take the square footage of all of our classrooms, very roughly speaking, it totally, of course, it depends on the room, but you can think you're somewhere between fifteen and eighteen people per, per room that we have. So that, that pretty much tells us there's no way to have all of our students back. And really, we can have approximately half of our students back. So that's where way back in the fall and even in the summer, that's where we were thinking this attendance group one and attendance group two. So that's how we got to the idea of splitting the students as half, the half came from the thirty-five square feet. Okay. So then it's, how frequently can we get those students onto class? And it, it really came down to, is it two full days? Or is it four half-days at the elementary level? And there were a couple of talking points that why the teams landed on the four half-days. And part of it comes down to actually, as weird as this might sound, or as maybe counterintuitive, it comes down to what that online experience will be for the students that are in hybrid. So, and, and what it'll be is it'll be mostly asynchronous work. So it'll mostly be work that students will be doing independently or, you know, with assistance of the family. So that was one reason for the four days a week is we, we feel our teachers will be able to kind of set up that, that asynchronous time every day. In addition, that everyday touch point, we didn't want, because of the nature of the online, we didn't want our teachers to, you know, say goodbye to a student on Tuesday and have it be the five full days with, with limited or even no interaction with their teacher. They would have online work to do, but it wouldn't have that, that, that teacher interaction. And then the last piece is, you know, especially for our, our youngest, youngest students, you know, our kindergartners. You know, never have even been on, on school yet. That two and a half hour time is a bit of a transition back towards a central sense of normalcy. Time on school, away from the comforts of their home and, and other families. So that's what goes into our thinking. Now, in, in all transparency, like I think we've shared at, at board meetings prior, we were expecting more of a sixty to seventy-five percent into the hybrid. And so being that it's only fifty-fifty, that is going to have some impacts in particular around those, you know, teacher assignments. We'll, we'll be taking a close look at how that will impact it. And the results of the survey may, may give us more options than we would have predicted based on the seventy-five or sixty percent mark.
And alongside that, I know Superintendent Garde touched on this earlier, but it sounds like there's some work looking at childcare options for parents. Because I know one of the challenges for, for working parents is that, you know, two hours, right? It's hard to get back to work with two hours. And so how might this program dovetail with, you know, some of the other community services that are already out there or that we might be engaging our community with?
I'd like to thank Deputy Superintendent Mead for unmuting his video and he'll, he'll be taking that one.
Absolutely. Steve Sparks has been working on this, Tom, with our principals to determine if in fact which school will have the actual space. And also working with our providers to determine if they're going to be equipped to be able to staff a program that would serve kids in an A M shift or a P M shift. And so we are looking at several of our schools being able to provide daycare onsite. So let me give you an example. If you have a student that is in an A M session, a parent may need an A M session of schooling. They may need a P M session for daycare. Looking at that option and making it available to them and then vice versa. So it's really dependent upon space in the school and that's a site by site. At this point, I believe we're at about thirteen of our elementary schools will be able to provide this level of service. It's not as high as I would like to see, but certainly our priority needs to be adequate space for students for the natural activities of schooling during the day.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from board members? I've, I've, I've got a couple. Brian, you mentioned about the staff had been doing a walkthrough at each of the levels. At some point, especially for our families that have never physically, the students that have never physically been in that school, will we be able to put anything like that online so that someone can, can just kind of get an idea of what it's going to look like inside and just kind of help with sort of their anxiety of what to expect?
You, you bet. I think Shelley would like to speak to that.
So Becky, our team right now is producing a video that is basically the day in the life of an elementary student. So it'll take them from the bus ride through arriving at school to how do they get their classroom, what's going to happen in the classroom, how breaks are going to be handled and, and all the details in between. It's a, a very ambitious video project. We're calling it The Beast. And it will be ready in just a couple of weeks. So we'll be getting that out to families as soon as possible. We're doing one for elementary and then we'll also be doing a separate one for secondary.
Great. Thank you so much. I know that's a lot of work, but I think our families really appreciate that, especially if they've never been in our building before. So I really appreciate you guys going the extra effort to, to make that happen. And then Josh, on the, on the updates on the HVAC system and the MERV, that kind of thing. Is there a way on our, that, that our principals or whatever can give updates to our family as those are happening? Because I know that, that is again, in a, a place where a lot of our families are anxious to hear about the HVAC system. Is there, is there a way as those go in that we can update our families on, on the progress we're, that's being made?
Sure, Becky. We're happy to do that. Like I mentioned, we have schools that are lined up to get the MERV thirteen filters. So I can work with communications. We can come up with a, a way to communicate how we're making progress, especially as we get to hybrid. So we'll look at that and we'll find the right means to, to get that on our, our website.
Great. So I assume besides what we're trying to share with, through our B S D website, through our direct communications, through emails, through faith, I mean, we've got lots of different ways that we use. Is, is our principals also updating our families as, as things are, are happening? So it's not just us from a district level that, that our families are also getting direct communication on how things are working, whether it be Lippi or whether it be hybrid or protocols or are, are principals also addressing that on a weekly basis, a monthly basis? I just, I don't know.
Okay, I'll go ahead and answer that one. I guess our principals are working with their staffs. As soon as they get updates from either the community involvement or teaching and learning, they take that information to their staffs as well. So all year long, we've kind of had a system going on to make sure that everybody is involved. There has been so much information that we're not, we don't always get it right, but we are trying to make sure that our principals are getting that information from their execs and the teams in order to relay it to our staff as well.
Yeah, I, I know that there's a fine line between not enough communication and too much communication. And it's a, something to, and, and each family has a different definition of what is, you know, what kind of information they need. But just what is the best way that we have found to try to keep our, our families, you know, updated? So it sounds like we're, we're using lots of different, different methods there. So I, I appreciate that. And then the last thing is more of a comment rather than a question. I appreciate all the work that Deputy Superintendent made and Steve Sparks. I know it's a huge undertaking with our childcare. But I, I know our first priority should be opening our schools. And that's what we are so waiting for as a board. And it's so good to hear that. And I so appreciate that we are moving in that direction. But I also know, you know, our working families need to know what's going to happen to their kids and it's causing a lot of anxiety. And I know we can't totally take that on and we can't make, we can't create more room and we, we can't make vendors be, but I, if there's just any way that any of our partners out there can hear us and think outside of the box and find ways that we can support our working families in. Because I think that really had to have resonated with our families trying to decide whether to pick hybrid or C D L of just how they're going to manage that, that communication. So if there's just a, again, I, I, I know that everybody's got a lot on their plate and the biggest thing is getting our schools safely open. But if there is just any way that our partners out there can help us with addressing that, I would really, really appreciate it on behalf of our working families. Any other questions from, thank you very much for all the work. We appreciate the great news. We appreciate the positive direction that we're going in. We appreciate the positive partnership that we have with all of our, our, our classified and certified staff to make this happen. And we're just very, very appreciative. So with that, we will move into our next report and that's long-range facilities update. So Deputy Superintendent Mead.
Good evening, Chair Tim Chuck, Superintendent Garde and School Board. It's good to see all of you this evening. This is an update that Steve is going to be providing to you and it's an update of the last three weeks. As you had an update, I believe it was a work session that you had last. And the progress that we're making on that and our outreach to the community. So that's the intent of this report at this time. Steve?
Good evening, Chair Tim Chuck and Board. My name is Stephen Sparks and tonight, just giving you a brief overview of what we have done over the past three weeks. Since we met with you on February first, we've been to over forty community meetings. These are P T O meetings, NAC meetings, C P O meetings and others as I can get on them. And we have had a, a pretty good participation and good questions that have come out of there. Generally, people are supportive of our work. It depends on the audience, of course. There are lots of questions on timing of a potential future bond and, you know, strategies for how to campaign for such a bond. But people generally understand that as a mature community and with older facilities, there are a lot of needs across the facility. A lot of people will want to advocate for their particular facility. But as they look across all of our data points and look at it as a, as a whole, understand that needs may be higher in other locations and not a specific school site. So that's been encouraging to, you know, hear people speak, you know, broadly and understand, you know, the needs as a district. One thing I do want to observe is that the folks at the Raleigh Hills community and not just the P T O, but the neighborhood meeting as well, were very appreciative of, of knowing that in the plan, we are identifying Raleigh Hills elementary school as a top priority for any future bond. So they, you know, their temperatures, you know, went down and, you know, they will continue to observe and participate. And, you know, it's all good because they want to be involved. So I, I don't want to go too much more and, and take up your valuable time. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. I will note that Erin Boyle and Josh Gamas are here, who can certainly talk about items from the current bond and facility-specific questions.
Board members, any questions?
I have a quick question, Becky.
Sure, Tom.
I'm wondering in terms of the long-range planning work that you guys are doing, if you're going to have incorporate goals as a part of your final product for seismic safety and potentially a goal for how we deal with deferred maintenance as we look, you know, on the long outlook to ten, fifteen, twenty-year line.
Tom, and I can, I can take that question. Thank you for sending that to us. As far as putting a goal in the, in the plan, I think that's definitely something that we can look at. And I just wanted to talk through what we're thinking about, you know, for both deferred maintenance and for seismic standards. With deferred maintenance, I'll go back to our facilities condition assessment that we got from McKinstry. And I gave that presentation last year about what McKinstry had done for us, the, the resources that they provided, that tool that we have now that looks at all of our facilities, gives us a condition assessment. When do we replace items? When should we replace equipment? And that's been a very helpful tool. And with that, we've been able to plan and look at bond planning. And that's why it's so important that we look at a, a future bond because we know we need additional capital improvements to, to help us get through that backlog. And so with the options that we're looking at in the plan for, for the next bond, we know that we can make a significant improvement in our backlog. And by doing that, we'll reduce that. And we can go from a district that's being very reactive and looking at a lot of things as they break, as they require emergency maintenance to now we're looking at what's planned in the schedule. So we have those numbers. We, we know what that looks like. And that's something we can talk to in a long-range plan. As far as seismic safety standards, the, the Oregon statute, four five five point four hundred, it says that we have to, subject to available funding, we have to have seismic rehabilitations and other actions to reduce the risk before January first, twenty thirty-two. And so with that, that's the goal. I mean, that's something that we're targeting. We've always been targeting that. Erin Boyle has done a great job through his seismic roadmap and kind of looking at what are our priorities for what needs to be repaired in a current existing school, what can be repaired by replacement? So if you think about Bearden High School, you think about other So if you think about Bearden High School, you think about other schools that that would have significant need that can get replaced. And so those are the things that we can talk about in that long range plan.
Thanks, Josh. I appreciate the information. I I just think it's important that we have some way of measuring our success because I've seen with other public entities where they don't have a goal in mind and they do things. And I'm not saying we're doing things piecemeal, but where they're doing things piecemeal that over time, these things grow and grow and grow until they hit the public attention when there's a big budget cut. And we're at a place now with so much work that you guys have been doing it so good. I hope we can find a way to set a marker for future boards and maybe even future Josh's and future Aaron's and uh people in those positions so that um we know where we are relative to that as time goes by and we don't ever find ourselves in that trap of of laying off staff or other people because we didn't pay enough attention to those.
A great roadmap of our history. And the my biggest concern as well as Aaron and Josh and Steve is moving forward and looking forward that we should as a school district be able to have a roadmap that's fifteen, twenty years out. And more importantly, at fifteen, twenty years out, looking back, our we owe that to our community, not only for the bonds that they have supported us with in the past, but also the future. So they can have a clear roadmap of where we're going and why we're going a certain direction. So McKinstry has been a major part of that. The seismic report is another. And so we have continued to gather information just as we are capitalizing on all the information from this two thousand fourteen bond. And an eight-year bond is a long cycle. We will have a comprehensive big picture of everything that was accomplished in this bond for our community. So that's something that can be looked at site by site. For those who want to dig deeper into it, great, we'll be able to have that as a resource for them. So thank you for mentioning that.
Thanks, Carl.
Anne, you have a question?
Yeah, I just uh for me, it helps if I just keep track of uh what we see as the next steps on this uh long-range facility plan update and when uh what we're expecting from the board. I know at some point we will approve it. Um, and I'm, I also had the opportunity to attend at least one of Steve's meetings. Um, and I recognize that uh he's doing an amazing job getting out to a lot of people. I also recognize it is a tough way to get public feedback. Um, and so I'm very curious about how we are going to navigate uh doing this very important job during a very difficult time. So uh and for me as a board member, it would help to just understand, you know, where we see this in the next six months.
Well, I can speak to um the planning process here of getting a um recommended plan to you this spring. Once we get to um, you know, an adopted plan, obviously the board is going to have to consider timing for referral of any bond. And for that, um has to be a strategy on getting information out and soliciting um feedback from folks on um, you know, the content of a bond. So there's a lot of work to to do with that. In um presenting at these meetings, we've been um sharing with the audience that this is just the first step of public engagement, that there will be more to come as uh the plan is refined. But in terms of a specific communication strategy, a public involvement strategy, we we're it's early days for us. We haven't um um done that yet, but we do recognize the need and um critical importance of that.
I just have a clarifying question then. So uh when you talk about the next phases for public involvement, what I heard you say, and I just wanted to make sure I had this right, was it was really more public feedback around bond timing and timing of projects than around changing or updating the plan that uh once, and I guess the way I look at it from a planning process is that once we have this long-range facility plan approved by the board, that's really going to be stable for the next ten years. Now, we can rearrange some things within it in terms of prioritization, but really, if it's not in this plan, it's unlikely to uh be emerged as a pressing need or be changed. Um, so I I guess this is my way of saying, so it seems to me that the time for community impact is now.
Yeah.
And I also wasn't sure if I understood all of that correctly.
Yeah, you you're absolutely right. So in terms of the plan itself, um, yeah, this is the time for communication on the planet and asking those specific questions um to the community. You know, there hasn't been a lot in terms of the oral testimony um or dialogue. Now, we do have the survey um that has been published and I have yet um myself have gone, I've not gone through all of the um comments that have been provided. So there uh I would anticipate that there would be more in that. Um, I can tell you that um the most meaningful uh comment about uh, you know, the long-range plan in terms of um, you know, content for the plan um gears around the capacity numbers in terms of what um do we need to do? Should there be uh boundary adjustments? Should we add capacity? You know, those kinds of uh things. Also, um about the uh, you know, our ed spec in terms of, you know, size of schools. So there's been some uh of that, but for the most part, it's been fairly light on the plan itself.
Okay, that was my observation as well.
So Anne, do you have any follow-up? Okay, Donna?
Hello, and I'd like to thank you, just like everyone is, for all of your hard work. Um, I guess what I'm interested in seeing as we're working through this as plan is maybe some sort of element or criteria that deals with um looking at a way to to minimize our maintenance costs. Because every time we um have a new construction project, whether we remodel a building or rebuild a new facility, that requires more maintenance people. And of course, I don't know what's going to happen in the future or the near future, but I'm cognizant of the fact that that maintenance dollars to uh should say to pay for for maintenance staff comes out of a different bucket. And we don't always have a lot of um money from the general fund to pay for our our teachers, let alone the the maintenance staff. So I'm sure that there is some creativity or there's probably some um construction plans that would take that into account, that would make it so we wouldn't necessarily have to double the size of our maintenance crew in order to quote unquote, uh increase our square footage uh attention to to, I mean, to increase the attention to an increased number of square footage at our schools. So I'm just kind of like throwing throwing that out to have as a consideration. And when you're sharing with us, maybe the um the plans you're looking at, sort of expressing it in that context that how um it doesn't necessarily have mean that we have to grow exponentially our maintenance budget.
I would love to respond to that, Donna, because the irony is we've not grown our maintenance budget in the eight years that we've had this bond. We've actually made cuts. And so we've actually lost staffing of our maintenance staff. Um, we talk about doubling. I I would have loved to have seen that, that is, we've seen nothing even remotely close of a ten percent. Where we do see an increase in staffing is at the custodial level in the building because that's a day-to-day upkeep of a facility. But we have not seen any kind of marked increase in maintenance staff per se at a district level. It has primarily been at a building level in custodial staff.
Yeah, I guess maybe I should restate it then. I guess I'm just concerned that we never have enough bodies to take care of the facilities, whether it's custodial staff or maintenance staff to the the level that uh maybe uh people would appreciate. So I'm just just wanting to make sure that when we're when we're considering um our uh the changes that we're going to be making, the improvements that we factor that in as well. Because just to make sure that we have enough people to cover the facilities uh as we remodel them or as we build them is all.
Thank you.
I can address that real quick. And that's a a really good comment and really good thoughts. And it's something I'm really passionate about is how can we design the facilities to require as little um maintenance and operational cost as possible. So it's something we're very thoughtful about and work really closely with our maintenance counterparts on how to accomplish that.
So I I just uh have one comment. I like Anne uh sat in on one of our long-range planning meetings. And I uh too wanna, I was so impressed with the quality, uh the the amount of information. I I learned things as a board member. It was just uh very well done. And I appreciate the the work Steve and the and the staffing that was uh, you know, in in that. So um, you know, thank you so much. But also, I'd have to say on the six years that I've been on the school board, we have never had as many uh tools to use in making our decisions and putting together a long-range plan that we that we know this the status of our buildings. We it's, this isn't a guess. This isn't, we know, we know what we need to do with staying up on maintenance. We we have these tools. Now it's just a matter of putting it it all together. And I just really uh admire the staff of of the things, the tools that you have brought in and the work that you've put in so that we as a board can make a a really good, sound decision based on based on facts, not just just hunches and our best our best guess. So so thank you so much for for that work. And we look forward to having that report when it's all done. So thank you, gentlemen. Um, with that, we're gonna move into discussion items. And um our our first discussion item, it's it's a very easy transition here, is on district-wide facilities repair and budget transfer. So Deputy Superintendent Mead, it's to you.
Again, good evening, everyone. Um, so this is a topic that goes back several years back when Paul Odenthal and I presented this to the board when we were realizing that we would not be able to complete the ninety-eight million dollar, ninety-eight million dollars worth of projects that had been promised to our voters, that there was going to be an increased cost in that. We've all become familiar with that as we've gone through the bond. So this is a topic. This is now the third time at least in a formal presentation of the board that we've approached you. Two years ago, Paul Odenthal and myself, um last year, Josh and Aaron and myself as well. And last year, you voted and approved um several million dollars. I believe it was about twelve million dollars, maybe thirteen. Was it twelve, Aaron?
Twelve, yeah.
Twelve million dollars last spring uh for us to be able to move forward with the projects last summer. So this evening, we are following up on that to complete that budget transfer so that we can move forward on the remainder of those projects this coming summer. But it will require an allocation um of resources to that. And so Aaron, if you'll speak to that, please.
Yeah, I mean, that pretty much sums it up. Um, it's just the remainder of the repair projects that are were um committed as part of the bond program, their district-wide repair projects. So it takes place all over the district. It's about fourteen million dollars and it's roofing, HVAC, um site work projects, all sorts of different things. But really, this is just the the money required to be able to finish those projects. And we've been showing it in the financial reports for a couple of years now. So it's not, it's not uh impact to the bottom line at this point.
And as a reminder, this is um, sorry, Diane, go ahead with your question.
Oh, it's fine. Um, I just, what's the to, Rick, can you remind us what the total reserve is that this is coming out of?
Okay, yes, I can. Um, so it after this transfer, it would be seven million. Let me open up the report real quick. So right now, it's a a little over twenty-one million. And so once we make this transfer, it'll be, it'll be right around seven million unallocated reserve.
And I can, I can add quickly that um the the plan for the different installments for the deferred maintenance has been briefed to the bond accountability committee. And we've been talking to this projection and they were aware of the first transfer and now this transfer. And we really haven't changed that plan. So that has been communicated with the B A C and they have um endorsed that uh transfer of funds to to be able to get us to a wrap today.
And and just to confirm, the reserve is in addition to contingencies on open projects that we have currently for each of those projects. So that is not our only reserve fund.
That is correct. Yes, yeah, open projects have their own contingencies.
Donna, you have a question?
Yes, um, I just wanted to know if you had a general ball ballpark or idea when all the projects that are associated with the bond will be completed, when the last one will be sort of done or close to or approximate?
Uh, as far as schedule goes, uh, yes, right now, our plan is to have most of the projects scheduled to be done by the end of next calendar year, so the end of twenty twenty-two. There are a couple that will go beyond that, um but but not very many.
Thanks, Aaron. I just wondering, I think this is something we should be celebrating and broadcasting. But I think it would be nice to have on our website like a clock or something or other that indicates, you know, people can just see very visually their tax dollars at work and how all the projects are almost finished.
And on budget.
Yeah, on budget. And oh, and because we're basically, and all the things that we've done, that's extra to boot. So I'd like to see that on the website, like a countdown or something. I think it's awesome. We should celebrate.
We will be happy to deliver that. And actually, had we been in session this year, we had planned on having a massive rollout in the fall so that it back to school nights and everything else. That there was going to be in every school, not only a poster, but literally a banner of the work that had been done in that school facility um and comparatively across the district. So that experience was not there. So we're busy at work. As you know, Shelley's team does amazing work. Um, so we will figure out how to do that and do that well because our community needs to understand the depth of, quite honestly, their commitment to our schools and what we've been able to accomplish in this time.
And plus during COVID, we need something to celebrate. So come on, let's celebrate.
Touche.
Anne?
Well, I Josh mentioned this, but uh he also did it in such an understated way that I wanted to just amplify a little bit about the bond accountability committee uh discussion around this recommendation. Um, they wholeheartedly support it. Uh, they're rather bullish about uh the fact that, you know, as Donna said, you know, there's so much worth celebrating that we've closed out projects successfully, that we were able to transfer our returns back and then be able to recommend ways that we can reuse those funds in a way that's responsible, honors our community and uh maintains our buildings in the way that they our community expects from us. And so I just wanted to uh share with you how thoughtful the bond accountability committee has been regarding this and that they have carefully reviewed it, that they are carefully holding back until they, you know, the remaining reserves, until those projects are really, really, really closed out. Um, and you know, I I expect we'll have a few more opportunities to spend an extra dollar or two along the way. But in the meantime, they're very comfortable with this recommendation.
Eric, is there something you wanted to add on your uh bond accountability committee?
No, I think answered it well. I mean, like at the very end, there'll be a little bit more contingency money probably or reserve money at the end. And uh the committee still has the mechanism to grade projects and bringing that to the board for final blessing approval, use the last seven million-ish dollars that will be available. So so no change of plan then.
Great. So any other comments? This is a great, great report. Appreciate it. And the board will vote on it uh next month. And if anybody has any questions between now and next month, uh, please let the the uh Aaron or Carl or Josh know. So thank you so much for the the great report. So uh, next discussion items, everybody stay where they are, um, is about the design of Raleigh Hills.
I think you're muted there, Carl.
Yes, but my colleagues on cabinet would say some of the best words I say. Um, just to give the board a reminder, not that you have no lack of memory here with regard to Raleigh Hills, we deferred that project in this bond uh due to the condition and the age of that facility. And we went to the staff, Paul Odenthal and myself, went to the staff as well as the community well over a year, I believe it was a year ago, October, um to share that, to get a perspective. And I would say overwhelmingly, people understood and supported that decision. Um, but we also heard that it was a priority that it be at the very top of the next bond, um that it would not be a project that would get buried or be in the fourth or fifth year of the bond. And that's absolutely what our planning is, is moving forward so that we can actually be prepared. At the beginning of the next bond, it probably won't be immediately, but we will certainly be on well on our way uh with the planning, with the intent to be able to tear down and rebuild a facility in that location. And so with that, Aaron will give us an update and what this request is. And this evening, so you'll have the privilege of hearing kind of the big picture with not a final vote until next month for this transfer.
Yes, thank you. So we were, we're asking for permission to be able to go ahead with some preliminary designs on the project. There are a lot of complicated factors to the project and getting a uh a head start on sorting through some of those issues will really help us know what the project will look like. Um, the timing right now is great as we're doing bond planning. Uh, this really will help us to have some better cost certainty as we look at developing a bond, making sure we have, you know, the right amount of budget requested for this project. you know, the right amount of budget requested for this project. And, and really, we have some time now to be able to get good community input on what the building could look like. There are a lot of traffic implications with how the, the school sits on Schults Ferry right now. It's not particularly safe and we need time to be able to engage with the city and county on what the new configuration would look like. And that's why we think this would be a really great opportunity just to help us figure out what that facility will look like in the future.
So Aaron, if you can remind us, what is the amount that we're requesting out of this total sum?
Sure. So that we have 12, a little over 12 million set aside right now. I, we don't know the exact amount. We'll, we'll have to go out and work with some, it ends up being in negotiation with architects, but it'll be, it won't be the full design. And so we said probably up to a million dollars we would like to spend on doing this evaluation work. And really it would be a, a great benefit for the design in the future. It's, it's not like a wasted effort. It's, it's money that would need to be spent at some point. And so it's a good opportunity to do it now.
Board members, any questions?
I have one question on that. Aaron, like I know that spending money now is a good thing, but say we don't get the next bond measure and we have to delay it a couple of years out before we have the funding to go through, would that cost spent now still be directly, you know, beneficial for us? Or will we lose anything in the, in the distance between funding? Yeah, good question. So I would say for the most part, the, the money would be well spent and it would not be wasted. There, you know, depending on how far the design went, there's the opportunity that changes would have to be made, like if code changes happened or something, but we're not going to progress the design that far that that would be an issue. We're really taking it kind of up to the conceptual level, which you reminded me, we did talk about this with the bond accountability committee too. And that was, that was kind of the stipulation that they had when recommending this also. But we really were focusing on the conceptual design and not going to full detailed design. Sounds good. Thank you.
So it looks like Tom's question got answered by your last comments, Aaron. But Anne, you had something that you wanted to add?
Well, I was just going to echo Aaron, you know, the, the, again, the, the back was very interested in our, making sure that we were just moving forward with a conceptual design at this point. They really felt like because we were uncertain when the bond would eventually pass, when construction would start, you know, we all know so many things about construction change. And so I, they, they, and I believe also they are very sensitive to the fact that this is likely to be a complicated project like Aaron mentioned. They'll be a project with a lot of community interest and a lot of priorities. And so really taking the time to thoughtfully go through this conceptual design was seen to be of value in terms of economic planning as well as in community engagement and making sure that we end up with the right project for Raleigh Hills. So there was a lot of support for this as long as it was a conceptual design.
Yeah, I think, I think you guys have had, you know, a really tough thing. We went out to this community. We heard what they had to say. There's, it's a school that has a lot of investiture in our community. It's been around for a long, long time. But we can't get it out ahead of the voter. I mean, this, this all is contingent on getting support of, of, of our voters. So, but you need to be prudent in that we have an actual plan that we are trying to present and that just doesn't happen overnight. So I appreciate the thoughtful way that you're trying to go about of being prudent, but at the same time, not taking it all for granted that our community needs to understand and buy into supporting this financially. So, so, so thank you so much for, for doing that. And we'll look for, again, board members, if you have any questions between now and next month, we need to vote on that. Let the, let the team know. So thank you. All right, that is it for discussion items. And now we're coming to the main event of the school board meeting, and that is our action items. And the first is the approval of the new middle school. And we'll hand that over to our communications, Shelley Bailey Shaw.
Good evening, everyone. In our board meeting in January, we discussed the naming options for our new middle school, which has been referred to as Timberland up until this point. I described to you the process that we went through with soliciting input from the community, from our Native American parent group and how we did outreach to our tribal partners. There were several names on the table, but the two that had native origins were Tumwater and Tumchuck, which are meaning waterfall in the Chinookwawa language, which is a common language that was used in the Pacific Northwest by native people, including the tribes that lived in this area. There was also consideration to the name Cedar Falls Middle School. And also we talked about the students' most popular choice was to retain the name Timberland. So those are all choices before you. And today we're looking for a final decision that we can communicate out to that community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley, for that explanation. We've got Shelley here with us who, her and her team did the research. We have Jill O'Neill, the, the new principal of the middle school, who was working with the community. So board members, if you have any other questions before we actually get to discussing the, the middle school, are there any other questions of Shelley or for Jill? All right. Does, does anybody have a motion to bring forward?
I do.
Donna?
I move that we name the middle school Tumwater. And these are the reasons. One, it symbolizes the Cedar Mills Falls. That's less than half a mile away from the school. There's a direct tie there. And as Shelley Bailey Shaw said, we did talk to our Native American community and they're in favor of, of that name. And third, our community has a strong desire to adopt a name with Indian roots. So it ties in to that. So that's why I moved that we name the school Tumwater.
I second that.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded that the new middle school be named Tumwater. With that is their discussion from the board. Any discussion? All right. Well, I will, I have some discussion. I, I want, first of all, we heard from community members and we know, I, I wasn't at all surprised that our community wanted to have the name Timberland. That's what the school has been referred to the last four or five years. It's what our community has gotten used to. And I, I can definitely see that that is why they would feel comfortable with that choice. And it would be the, the path of least, you know, that's what, that's what the community wants. But I think we have been given a very important gift here today. And that I, I went this past weekend and I drove by the school and I just sat and looked at it for a while to remind myself of, of what kind of things that we established in this school. But the gift that we have been given is that we have a very rich heritage right in our backyard and we have the, the falls right in our backyard. And we have a very strong history with our first Americans, our Native Americans. And this will give us a time that we are able to explore that, educate. And I think years from now, I, I know that the students here today that, you know, Timberland is a real easy, but we are naming a school for 75, 100, 150 years. And what a story. We are going to be able to say that we took our roots, our heritage, something that is so important to the Tuauton Valley, to our first Americans here and why we are honoring that. And this is not an opportunity we get very often in our, in our school district. And I think Tumwater is a, a great example with we are honoring the geographic of the falls and the water with the Tumwater name, but we're also so much richly recognizing the people that gave in our first original Americans of being able to provide the land that we today call home and do business on. And I think this, that we would be missing an opportunity. And I apologize to those that want the name Timberland. And I think that there's a way for our students' voice to be heard. And we still have a mascot and a whole bunch of other things to choose with our first, with this middle school that they will be able to. But I, I really think that it is important for this board to recognize what we have in our own backyard and, and name it Tumwater. So Anne, did you, did you have a comment? Or was that from?
I'll keep, I'll keep it short. And I, I agree with you wholeheartedly on taking advantage of this opportunity. I recognize that the architecture of the middle school incorporates Native American elements. And I believe that this will help to reinforce the naming and education aspects that are available as part of this. As I've been sitting here tonight, I've been remembering that when Westview High School was first named, actually it, it was named after a development, similar to what is being highly advocated that Timberland be do, be do now. And, and actually the board had to over, had to change that because people soon went, wait a minute, you know, we're, we're more than a commercial area. And so I'm glad that the board is entertaining this as a possibility. I strongly support the recommendation. And I do so because I believe that it will help our students to honor our history and also to look forward as a community that we want to be. And how do we best reinforce that?
Any other discussion on the motion? With that, we'll call the question. If you will vote either I, nay, or abstain when your name is called. The motion is that we name our new middle school Tumwater. Anne Brian?
Aye.
Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Leanne Larson?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Donna Tyner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Aye.
Chair Becky Timchuck?
Aye.
With that, the motion passes seven to zero. And we have a new, new middle school in Beaverton School District and is now be forever known as Tumwater Middle School. Thank you so much, board, for your work. Thank you, staff, for all the work. Thank you to our community that, that gave us input. And we look, we're very, very proud of our new middle school and the rich heritage that it brings to our school district. So thank you. Are there any other motions?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? With none, will signify.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And this is, I wonder if Aaron is still on here, Carl. Just a quick question, because we have on there an agenda item regarding the track at Beaverton High School. And I just want to make sure that, that the work that's being done there also dovetails with the possibility in a future bond that we are looking at a new high school and that folks in the community are aware of that. So I wanted to bring that up really quickly. I know that things need to be repaired and that that's important work. But I also want to make sure that we highlight this at this juncture.
Sure. I'll be happy to address that, Tom. So those funds are being taken from what we just talked about, the deferred maintenance program. It's not being taken from community funds. The project scope is to resurface and we expect that to last five years or so. And so it'll be kind of in alignment with, you know, if we were to get a, a new bond and have a replacement high school. So the work is definitely needed. I'm sure if Dr. Erwin were here, she would say the same thing. We need that track to be resurfaced. It's been a long time coming. And so that's basically the scope of it. Again, deferred maintenance coming out of the, out of our, our current bond program.
Thanks, Josh. And with that, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Tom. So I will, all those, I will call your name. And if you approve the consent agenda, signify by saying I, nay, or abstain. Anne Brian?
Aye.
Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Leanne Larson?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Donna Tyner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Aye.
Chair Becky Timchuck, aye. With that, the consent agenda passes seven to zero. That brings us to the end of the, just the regular business part. But do board members have any comments that they would like to make? Any comments? Well, I guess I have a nickel in my meter tonight. I have just one comment that I want to make to all of our, all of our members of our community that, that go out. These have been very, very difficult times. I appreciate the way the staff has, has stepped up and addressed those difficult times. And I know for many of you where either we are moving too slow, you wish we could open up next week. They can't understand. And then we have other people that think we are rushing in and somewhere we find something that works in the middle. And we have close to 40,000 students in our school district. Every family's story is different. Everybody has a different level of, of resilience, of resonance, of, of being able to have tolerance to, to different things. And we need to honor that in all of our families and try to incorporate the best we can for our community. And I, I know our community is looking to this board for direction. And I want you to all know that this board very much supports what is going on and moving forward to having our, our schools open and having them be safe for our staff and doing what is right for students. We all serve on this board because we want to do what is right for students. And so we appreciate our community's support during this difficult time and keep asking the questions and keep engaging in conversation with us. And I've been, it's been a real privilege for me the last couple of weeks to engage with a lot of members of our community and hear their concerns upfront. And we are strong because we have a passionate, engaged community. And I will take that anytime. So thank you so much for your patience out there and we will keep moving forward and we will keep doing what is, what is best for kids. And so with that, Superintendent Grotting, do you have any final remarks?
Just thanks, thanks, everybody for all their hard work in these difficult times. And, and like you said, especially to our first teachers of our students, our parents and families and everybody. And, and thanks to all the staff here. Been working hard and we're going to get through this and come out better.
With that, our regular meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be on Monday, March 15. And we are adjourned and aboard. We will meet in executive session, but we'll take like a five-minute break and, and come back and have executive session. So thank you very much. This ends our regular board meeting.